Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Buenos dias, good afternoon. Chairman Cruz, Senator Oco, Senator Splonk, the Honorable Attorney Atlee, the Office of the Mayor of Rota, the Rota Municipal Council, and the people of Rota. For the record, my name is Kevin Bussis, Par Secretary for the Office of the Governor. On behalf of Governor Ralph DeLeonore Torres and Lieutenant Governor Arnold and Lieutenant Plaschus, I thank you for the opportunity to come and testify before you today. I'm here to introduce the governor and the governor's nominee for Secretary of Commerce, Mr. Edward Masca de Leon Guero. Mr. DeLeon Guero brings years of public and private sector experience in this critical position within our Commonwealth government. Prior to his appointment as Acting Secretary, Mr. DeLeon Guero served as the former registrar of corporation for the Department of Commerce under this administration. He's also a current member of the CAC board of trustees. His extensive public service includes serving as a congressman in the 5th Northern Marianas Commonwealth Legislative House of Representatives, an executive director for the Commonwealth Ports Authority, a commissioner for the former MPLA, now MPLT Board, a chief financial officer for the Commonwealth Health Center, a former secretary of Bullock Works, a dean of Administration and Business Affairs at the Northern Marianas College, as well as a federal programs coordinator during the trust territorial government period. If confirmed by this august body, he intends to make the Seaman Department of Commerce a more well-rounded agency that will prioritize economic development, streamline business permanently, collaboration with the Department of Finance, ensure proper data collection, and provide enforcement to safeguard businesses and consumers. The management and development of our economy is undoubtedly the most important priority of our Commonwealth, and it requires a comprehensive community approach from our villages to our private sector partners, along with careful planning and collaboration with leaders and citizens from all three senatorial districts. Mr. DeLeon Guero intends to use his extensive business knowledge and public service background to assist the governor and lieutenant governor address this goal by working well with our private sector, our federal partners, as well as members of the legislature. Governor Torres and Lieutenant Governor Plaschus placed their full trust and confidence in Mr. DeLeon Guero to become the Commonwealth's next Secretary of Commerce. I know he stands ready to answer your questions and report on his plans for the future. His leadership, his extensive public service background, and willingness to work well with the private sector, federal partners, as well as the legislature will make the department better and the Commonwealth government much more efficient. Thank you, Mrs. Moss and Gylissim, for the opportunity to introduce him to this august body. We also thank you, Mr. Chairman, Senator Oco, Senator Splonk, for your leadership in providing an opportunity for our people in all three senatorial districts, especially here on Rota to listen and participate in your deliberation of critical positions for our Commonwealth. Thank you again, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Bautista. I'd like to ask the appointee to please stand so that we can hear the agreement and the history of.
Please, first, you're welcome. Mr. Edward Masca de Leon Guero, if you have some followings or summaries that a testimony you shall give in the matter at hand for the truth, I hope you'll acknowledge it.
Thank you. Mr. Guero, we've received required documents by this committee. If you have more to share with us, we will have the floor, but please stay in there for a little bit. Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, and members of this body. Mayor Antelico Rora, and all the government officials that are here today from Rora. Everybody, good afternoon. Today, in this hearing, I don't have any elaborate speech to make because I want to testify in front of you from my heart. I'm blessed that I would do the best that I can from all the experience that I have and, you know, to take over the leadership of the Department of Commerce. I'd like to thank the governor and lieutenant governor for your confidence in appointing me and to the blessing of this committee and the entire Senate. I bless myself to do the best I can should I be confirmed as the Secretary of the Department of Commerce. I have a different emphasis and approach that I would like to instill with the Department of Commerce. And I just want to elaborate a little bit on that before I begin to answer any question. And that is, I'm going to be working very closely with the leadership of each of the three different islands, Rota, Tinian, and Saipan, to come up with the plan, the vision, and how to work together so that we can accomplish an issue of enticing and moving forward of our economy to the island. I'm going to be working also with the legislature because there may be some amendments that need to be done on existing legislation that will help us to enhance the delivery of services from the Department of Commerce to our business community and the entire community of Cinemai. So with that, I am ready to answer any question, and I'm hoping to hear some recommendations, regardless whether it's for me or against me. I am pleased to hear it so that based on that we can come up with the right approach and the right mission and goals to accomplish our goal. Thank you, and good afternoon, everybody.
Thank you, Mr. Guero. And before I allow the members of the public in the gallery to come up and deliver testimony, first I would like to recognize those entities that are invited to deliver testimony. First, on this, the municipality of Rota Mayor Efren Akal. If you wish, I know that you submitted a written testimony you wish to come up and deliver. If not, then move on to the next entity that I found. Well, you're welcome to deliver testimony. And before you begin, please stay in there for a little bit. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good afternoon to all of you. Chairman Frank Cruz of the AIG Committee, welcome to Rota. Senator Victor Oco, welcome home. And Senator Vini, again, welcome to Rota. I think I saw you, I think we saw you two months ago, I mean, two weeks ago perhaps. To me, you can come here every day so that you can improve the economy of Rota, the islands of Tinian, Rota, and of course Saipan. So, as you mentioned, Chairman, before you, I had written a comment, but allow me to at least summarize my statement in favor of the appointment of Mr. Edward Masca de Leon Guero for Secretary of Commerce. Let me say that I want to thank the Governor Ralph Torres and the Lieutenant Governor for appointing Mr. DeLeon Guero. And that is, because we all know, I believe, Ed DeLeon Guero. And he is the man, it's an appointment that we need here in the Commonwealth. As she does, we all know, his experience, his vast experience on government and private will be an asset for the Commonwealth and the department and, of course, the community of the Commonwealth. So I urge the committee to expedite his confirmation because we have a lot to do. We have very short time, and we have a lot to do for the community of the Commonwealth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Antelico. No one from the Eaton Rota Municipal Council? The resident department head of Commerce are the students of Agnonia?
Thank you, Chairman Cruz. I didn't bear a written statement. I'd like to submit that now. But if I may now, I would also like to read it out if you could have the opportunity. Also, I want to thank the mayor, the governor, and the lieutenant governor for appointing Mr. Edward DeLeon Guero to this position. Greetings, Mr. Chairman. I am Dean Agnonia Agnonia, President Department Head of the Department of Commerce here in Rota, and I'm here to support the confirmation of Mr. Edward DeLeon Guero for Secretary of the Department of Commerce. Through my interactions with Mr. DeLeon Guero, I found him to be very knowledgeable with regards to our local economy. After a brief research and his background experience, I find his credentials to be very impressive. I've spoken with Mr. DeLeon Guero with regards to his plans to move our department forward, and I personally believe that with his knowledge and experience, our department will definitely progress so that our local economy will be able to grow and recover from the impacts of COVID-19. And with that said, I want to thank you for the opportunity to submit my vote.
Thank you, Agnonia Agnonia. And now, before I open the floor for the members of the general public that are here, again, I would like to remind everyone that any comments that are raised that are not directly related with this public hearing will not be entertained and subsequently removed from the record. At this time, the public comment is now open. Any members of the general public in the gallery which is to come forward to give testimony, whether you want support or not, it's important. You're welcome to come forward. And before you begin, please stay in there for the record. Thank you.
In a moment, I should turn my attention to the microphone. I'm going to sit there and listen to my attention. I appear before this body to register my support to Mr. DeLeon Guero. I would say that with Governor Torres and Lieutenant Governor Plaschus' election and, of course, Kevin's statement about the nominee, and, of course, the nominee himself, the way he presents himself, his background, his speaks calling. So, in order to move forward with progress, one of the things that I took into note of is on his statement seems that DeLeon Guero is going to put together the islands. You may not like the part of the testifying of a registered local supporter. After hearing that, I think it leave an impression that the nominee himself is able and willing to work closely with the resident department heads for both Tinian and Rota. And so, you know, to fast forward, Mr. Chairman and members, to Mrs. Moss again for the opportunity to come forward, to come to Rota and provide us the means to testify on behalf of the nominee. So again, Mrs. Moss, welcome to Rota.
Buenos, señor Francisco Cruz. Esta señorita. Senator Cruz, Senator Oco, Senator Vini. Buenos para Hamzur Torres. For the record, inano si wakina di zama king. Gaigizu winipago na momento para ba'ho'na'ha'ngu suputashon or ba'sangan isuputashon para si señor Edward Masca de Leon Guero. Inamihi ne napunta ne guvenno' sa di segundu guvenno'. Husenti i senentenyan za i kapasidatnya si señor DeLeon Guero. Huli ne kurasonnyan fed za maga'hit na gaig'i kurasonnyan para alzuda intermenti Marianas. Gauhu papaisin hamzum ka'osinyen konsedera za inkonfirm si señor Edward Masca de Leon Guero para secretario e-commerce. Manu'umizu za li'seguna i komentosnyan si señor DeLeon Guero. He has the heart to help the people of Rota, Tinian, and Saipan. And I will say this to him that I want to see that, Mr. DeLeon Guero, and I will challenge that words of yours. Na maga'hit, you're going to work for the people of the Marianas. Thank you for giving me this opportunity to come up and say my testimony. Again, ba'pa'isin hamzufavor za maila za ta'konfirma si señor DeLeon Guero. Zantisa de ba'ho' dingo isiponyo ah dispenza zo ba'erkunisa loke ima'zot ya ka'iluta si señor Efren Atavit talwa on tokuluna si dos Mosses and buenas satis para Hamzur Torres.
Si dos Mosses, please.
Good afternoon, distinguished members of this committee. Mr. Chairman, members, for record, my name is Ivan T. Marab Jr. I'm a voter and a resident of San Pablo 1. I'm here to support our acting secretary for Commerce, approval to sit as the new secretary and moving forward in providing the Commonwealth, including Rota, with the much-needed assistance. Now, I just want to let everybody know it's about time that we tap into former educators, former employees of the Northern Marianas College and position them in our government so that when one day, like Mr. Guero here, former dean, will serve as providing the next idea of what commerce should deliver to their business community, we're taking the cream to the crown and putting them in position. I thank everyone for my opportunity to rise in support of the nomination, and I ask this body to expedite the decision. Let's have Dean Reynolds Agnonia Ararti work together with the new Secretary of Commerce, Si dos Mosses.
Thank you, Senator. He'll be in the public comment. At this time, the comments now close. Claude, can you allow us a little bit? Whether you support or not, it's important.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Senate AIG Committee, Senator DeLeon Guero are members of the general public. In addition to the oral testimony received today on the executive appointment of Mr. Edward Masca de Leon Guero to serve as Secretary of the Department of Commerce, please be advised of the additional written comments which were received in the part of our meeting from Terry A. Enos, District Development Manager, Triple J Secretary and operator, and the Honorable Agent Agnonia Agnonia, Mayor of the Municipality of Rota. At this time, no written comment or formal notification from Mr. DeLeon Guero will be taken from the view. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Director. At this time, I would like to recognize all the first employees, the vice chairmen of these committees, Senator Victor Oco.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To the mayor of Rota, all the present directors that are here to join us in this public hearing, our staff, the mayor's office, thank you for making your time available for today's public hearings. It relates to the nominee, Mr. Edward Masca de Leon Guero, to serve as the Secretary of Commerce for the Commonwealth. And I just want to hear his out my personal message to the public that he says, "Guero is no stranger to me as a colleague once upon a time in the legislature and as a staff or as a director for the Commonwealth Authority and other positions that he upheld in the past to have proven his ability in creating the pathway for economic opportunity to wherever department he served. And more so, it is so indicative when he was the executive director of CBA. He have exerted all his energy to ensure that, number one, the settlement of the construction of the Tinian Airport who at that time sat for the longest time without completing the terminal. And with his graciousness, he was able to come to conclusion to make that project a reality. As we come to Tinian, we can see already the condition of that infrastructure. As a colleague in the legislature, he has been very vocal in providing public service as well to his prison, not only to his prison, but to the Commonwealth. Today, Mr. Guero, we approach you to Rota for the reason that you will be serving the Department of Commerce, Commonwealth White. And your decision in the central government is very critical to the first and second senatorial district on the Department of Commerce. I know that you've been in this department several weeks before your appointment. And I can see the, I have made some calls meeting with the commerce staff, the central government, as to the environment of the workplace. And it seems that they are very much open, more relaxed, and are more free to move, to speak to you. So that is the beginning when how a management can really come up with a solution, most particularly when it comes in need. My concern here is, in the past, we've seen some of the division level. There are times that a lot of investment investors reach my attention regarding the difficulty in trying to get their business permits or license go across the division of licensing. And one of the concerns that I have is when an applicant comes to that office, I want you to, or I would recommend you to ensure that your division staff or whoever is in charge, rather than returning the application for this investment investor, I'd rather like you to ensure that the division staff, management, help them navigate that application for more expediency and to really see the business interest move within the Commonwealth. And, you know, again, like also the banking division, I'd like you to really and seriously look into that division as we particularly need that. Now, in the service providing the two senatorial districts who's miles away from the central government, can you give us, the committee, at least a brief idea of what you envision your department be the next executive to ensure that Rota and Tinian will see difference in management and help from the central office? And you just briefly give the committee idea?
Thank you, Senator Oco. Your comment really touches me because that's the approach that I have in mind. Is that in order for Commerce to accomplish their mission, we need to work together with the leadership of Tinian and Rota. Work together with the mayor, the delegation, the municipal council, the Department of Commerce counterpart here to come up with the plan and objective of what the local people wants to see, you know, accomplished in the economic development section. In regards to the permitting, I understand the frustration. I've spoken to many people, both from the islands and also in Saipan. And to take care of that problem, as you know, I finally had the opportunity to have a public law passed that will return some of the fees that the registrar corporation is bringing every year to upgrade the permitting system. But that upgrade is not only going to serve the registrar corporation, it's going to serve all the divisions of the Department of Commerce. So we will be distancing the capability of permitting, reporting, doing your corporation annual report, and how you do the different corporation that will accept you in the Cinemai through going just through, you know, a website, a photo on the Commerce, and it will show you how to do all of these things. Now, when somebody submits a request for permits or requests for a corporate, it takes about 15 to 30 days to process. When I'm finished with this at the end of 2022, because I have the sunset clause on the bill of the law that I have to complete that facilitation for register by the end of 2022, it will expedite the processing to 24 hours, and you're done. Now, we have almost 4,000 plus of corporations in the Cinemai, and that includes Rota, Tinian, and Saipan. And every year, there are so many different reports that are required under the laws of the Commonwealth to be reported to Commerce. There are also fees that they pay. And not only that, they spend so much money going to finance, going to business license, going to one-stop at Commerce, going, you know, just moving all around just to get the requirements, the papers that are required to actually finish the San Diego report. When I'm done with this upgrading of the system, you don't need to go anywhere. You know, you can do everything on your computer, submit all payment to finance and all that. And we are very lucky because we're starting to implement this, and finance already have the program for permitting. And also the CSD and the Commerce already have the program also that I brought to purchase with the money that comes from the registrar corporation fees. So what we do right now is working together to put the platform together and start archiving all the different business papers that we have been keeping. So more than 10, you know, 10 million pieces of papers that are in the Department of Commerce. It's about four rooms full of filing cabinets that are from post-it or a time up to now. We still keep all those records. So after we archive all of that, I'm going to be coming to you guys again to ask for, you know, for a limited time of, how many years can we keep? Or should we keep these documents? Right now, the law says that cooperation can come back in two years. I'm thinking maybe perhaps we should keep these records, the hard copy records for five years. And all the rest have been archived, so it's in the computer. If we need it, we can always be treated. So those are coming up soon, and I'm going to be working with the mayor here of the Department of Commerce and the delegation so that you know the progress as we go on and how can we help Rota and Tinian, you know, to enhance the processing of all of those things that we are also developing in Saipan.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Guero, for that idea that you have in mind. And we are really concerned, you know, with our Commerce. And another thing I want to see under your leadership as Secretary of Commerce when confirmed, that Rota staff be given also the opportunity for training and expansion of position and non-duplication, but a position that one will be responsible to ensure the facilitation of implementation rather than giving it one individual, you know, to be bombarded with all this in one given time. So I hope you can look into that and consider both, not only for Rota, but as well for Tinian. And with that, then we can simply say that, yes, your leadership will be a reality of. And with that, then we can simply say that, yes, your leadership will be a reality of your division or your department working together along with the two municipalities that are less privileged to see a new idea or development out with the central government. So I just want to reiterate that any new idea or implementation program that you consider bringing both Rota and Tinian so that they can be updated also as to the system, your office will be updated. And then we can safely say that, yes, it's a unified regulation and it's a unified responsibility, be a personnel from Rota or Tinian, that they are able also to answer, you know, a question or help other investment, fulfilling the necessary requirement without sending this application to Saipan because they are not, they are least privileged of understanding the regulation that Saipan has not shared with the two senatorials. And, you know, in every public hearing for this position in holding Secretary Commissioner, the members of the confirming body, there's not one before. That said, we will not report to the members of the confirming body of what they have committed before the committee to share information from time to time. There are secretaries that have been confirmed, we never see their hair stick up or their hair falls down, we just lost communication. And the only time that we can properly meet eye to eye is when we call them. But in their testimony during the public, the hearing, we don't need to call them, they will be coming to the legislature to report, share ideas of what they have accomplished based in their testimony. And I know that with you having experienced all these rough roads that you served once upon a time, enable you to understand the magnitude of sharing that with the enabling legislative body to ensure that you get the necessary help today and in the future. And giving that environment, you know, that relationship between your office and the legislature, I will assure you that you will be sitting on, or you'll be driving on a smooth pathway. So I hope that we do not forget the testimony you presented or when I asked you a question of your brief idea, that you will not forget that once you are confirmed. I know that in the years, several years back, the Department of Commerce once upon a time implemented this program, the cash on scale. I think Tinian and Rota will be better served by your department if such program can be reintroduced to our Commerce and business. And with that help, it will increase the interest of our Commerce to plan and having the Commerce within their side to help them with their products to sell the market will develop a real interest for them to be more vigilant and proactive to do more of that when the department is behind them. So I hope that you can consider that and probably be working on what cost estimate will that initiate by your department to implement a program here in Rota and Tinian. I'm not quite sure whether Saipan needs this because there's already a commerce market. But for Rota, that we need the Department of Commerce to introduce this program again. So do you, do you think that the idea to establish this cash on scale within Rota and Tinian will really be meaningful and fruitful for our Commerce?
Yes.
In your own words?
Yes, thank you again, and I feel that that's the reason why, let me just tell you that I was here since yesterday, and I met with the director of, you know, of Commerce and also the SBA consultant that was here. And today I have a big meeting with the mayor, and that's my interest is to come down and told the mayor as soon as I get confirmed, you're going to be seeing the admin down here with him, staff of Commerce, SBA, the delegation here to sit down and work out what is the priority that the leadership here in Rota wants to do. And then on top of that, to boost that, to make it a reality. I believe that the program that you mentioned will really help and, you know, entice the farmers here in Rota, but there are other programs also that we have some available resources that we can provide small farmers or small entrepreneurs here in Rota, and we just need to put more emphasis into trying to get it moving and succeed and success. And one of the things that I'd like to just add on with your previous comments is that many times we look at Department of Commerce as a permitting agency or as an enforcement agency, I don't look at it that way. I look at it as, yes, we have the responsibility to make sure that the corporation or business follow the, you know, the rules and regulations on the law, but at the same time, we have a further responsibility, and that is if a business person from outside comes into Saipan and they don't know how to proceed with meeting all those requirements, it is our responsibility to come out and help them to ensure that they understand why they need to do it and how to do it. Because the success of these businesses is the success for the CNMI people and for the entire island. That's how I look at it.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrero, and that's why I just wanted to reiterate then these ideas for you to be holding the helm of the Commerce because I think I have enough experience working with you, side by side, the legislature and other areas that you and I are involved in trying to bring about economic growth to the island. And that's one way that we can really know and satisfy the interest of our people, particularly during this period of time. And I hope that with this alpha money, that you can properly look into what, what program that this funding can, your department be visible in getting this, and I hope, and I am pretty sure that bargaining specimen is part of that incentive. And that's why I bring about this cash on scale program and see whether that can be looked into, into your goals and objective in running the Department of Commonwealth, most particularly to, it is fortunate municipalities that do not have that firsthand to just carry their production to the wholesale to the market. You know, it's difficult here, then you have to bring it out to the airport and all these things. So maybe we can create that idea to simplify the difficulty of being some system bargaining for commercial farmers, that we can probably help them, no?
Yes.
And the other, one that I really want to see the Commerce, Department of Commerce, work along with the, hopefully, business people in their respective community. I would like to see your department, you and the resident director, probably hold, invite the Rota business people and have a meeting and see what they have on hand. How can they get, what kind of help the department can provide them? And what business idea do they have so that the department itself can be prepared for the future, no? I don't want to see our business committee here being left aside without any navigation to their business, what their business, you know. And that can really also encourage more young business people to engage in the future. The mayor raised a very critical issue here regarding ways and method. And I hope that the department can, can really impose that or do a recheck of all this so that, I don't want to go to the shop and the gas bank is five fifty and when I get to the gas, it's six seventy-five. So I think this is the concern that we have raised, like that what is on the price tag? That should be written in the gas register and that different. The calibration also of all these pumps. We need also to ensure that they are up to date, you know, and not only the customer cheating the operator because the pump is not working good, or the operator is cheating customer because the pump is not calibrated and charging more to the customer. So I think we need to balance the customer and the provider. So with that, Mr. Guerrero, I like to say that my vote will be an affirmative side, but I think I make that recommendation to the members that we will decide that after we complete all the hearing and all the senatorial districts. And whatever you're doing today as acting capacity, I would like you to maybe start working on what we really have, you know, in your objective to implement way of work. So at this time, I'd like to just you to the next third group, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Guerrero.
Thank you, my friend. Now I would like to recognize, hold your hands up.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And first, I'd like to say to the people present, thank you for being here with us in this hearing, like to acknowledge the mayor and your staff for having us here. And it's always a pleasure to be back in Rota, and most important to your entire community of Rota, the hospitality here is really, really immeasurable. Each time I come here, I want to stay longer and longer, so I'll try to come every day, mayor, I promise this to them. But again, it's great to be back here in Rota. Good afternoon, Mr. Guerrero. I was just telling the members before we started that, I mean, I asked Kevin, I think we just saw you several months ago in our EAGI hearings in Saipan to serve under the award of trustees of CCC. So that adds again to your impressive resume and credentials that you possess moving forward to the Department of Commerce upon your approval of the nomination. But I'd like to thank you for accepting the nomination from the governor and the senate governor. Again, your credentials based on your resume is very, very impressive. From being in the Department of Commerce as the registrar, you've been able to, or you're on the front row seat in having custody of most certificates, records, documents pertaining to corporations, partnerships, nonprofits, you should be known, stranger to the business community, both small businesses up to the corporate level in the CNMI. So that's a great value and a great tool to have stepping into your new role upon confirmation. You have also in, under your belt, being your own, your own boss as a business owner, so you know the challenges and tasks it takes to, you know, to thrive in the CNMI as a business owner. You've been head of departments, mainly CPA, you've been a commissioner of the Bravos Public Authority, a chief financial officer of the Commonwealth Health Center, also the Secretary of Finance. So you've held many, many hats in our government and not to mention being a leader as well and having a seat at the table in the fifth Commonwealth, even though of Bravos Legislature. So that's just to name, to name a few of what's on your resume. And with an impressive resume comes very high expectations. That's what it brings. So as we drive ourselves to be successful in what we do, it brings expectations from our people that we serve. So, you know, we're comforted, we're comforted, at least myself up here as a panel member, I'm comforted with those credentials and those expertise as you move on to your new, your new title. So I'm seeing that you can use all those, we look forward to your approach and ideas based on those credentials that you have. I opened the CNMI Department of Commerce website, and I do that a lot during these EAGI meetings, and the first thing that pops up in the middle of the screen, it says, committed to the success of business in the CNMI. That's the first thing that pops up on the website. And that's probably the main goal of the Department of Commerce is to aid these business owners and business entities to thrive in our CNMI. The Department of Commerce now is a very, very vital department, not only for this period in time, it's always been a vital department, but now more than ever, I think it's probably one of the most important departments, you know, especially in these uncharted territories that we're facing right now with this pandemic after five years of just all these natural disasters. You know, we're still kind of driving, but we, I won't be afraid to recognize that we're driving, but we haven't really figured out where we're going to go yet because there's no playbook for this, and we're still trying to kind of just take everything day by day and as we receive funding from the federal government and all this stuff, we're trying to put all these things together and keep our ducks in the pond and our stars aligned so we can kind of continue providing for our people. But I think what's most important here is that we should acknowledge the factors that are the barriers for businesses to succeed. And there are challenges and barriers, because you've probably felt them yourself and you've seen them as the registrar of Commerce and the acting Secretary of Commerce right now. So I think we have to kind of get a hold of that and grab that bull by the horn and try to list down what are those challenges. Right on top of my head, I think we should work with, and I say me because it's, you know, we're going to do this together. You have your role in driving healthy commerce in CNMI. The people behind you have their roles as well, and we as legislators have our roles as well, so we're going to do it together. And, you know, we just got to put our heads together so that we can succeed in that. One thing I'd like to see is, I've gone through the website, and there are some reports on your composite price index, right, and your CPI and stuff like that, but it'd be great to kind of really differentiate those per senatorial district and to see what are the differences and what we can do to kind of improve, you know, the decisions that drive, drive business success right through the consumer price index and the gross domestic product. It's very important, that data is very, very important. That could really drive more accurate decisions in our small business owners and maybe even entice our people to take that risk and venture into small business. I really like, just each time I drive down to some, some to my hotel as I really like, just each time I drive down to Som Som to my hotel as when I come to here to Rota is I always envision all the empty commercial spaces there with our own local people. And I know it's tough that, you know, our main industry, our tourism industry is down, but we, at this time, we we have to be our own tourists. We have to be our own customers because we are the only ones here. And we always hear that, oh, there's no tourists, we have to wait for them. No, we don't. We can help each other, we can support each other. So let's be those people until that changes in the Commonwealth. So GDP and CPI calculations, maybe if we can kinda really lay that out and then really kinda hone in into each senatorial district and see the differences and why they are different. What drives the difference and what drives those comparisons to again drive great business decisions. We have to acknowledge all these factors. Like I said, we have the absence in tourism. But then even with the absence in tourism, I've really looked around and and it's right in front of our eyes, we have sectors in our business community that are still thriving. Our restaurants, everyone's eating in restaurants. It's something, it's something to look at and it's something to observe and really ponder. Our local produce vendors, you know, those, those small businesses are thriving. So really again placing those information on the table and see which sectors in business are, even in this crisis and this epidemic, these businesses are still able to thrive. How can we help them to improve and how can we help those that are struggling kinda get up to that level? I'm not sure what the profit margins of the restaurants are right now, right? And the wholesalers, but I'm sure they're pretty healthy because, you know, we have all of our people that are coming out. They were cabin, you know, they all had cabin fever from being quarantined at their homes and stuff like that. So we're trying to get out and especially with those federal funds and assistance that need to be receiving. Maybe we can gather data and see what kind of, what difference our indexes and composite price indexes have changed with the, you know, with the availability of these funds that, you know, we have our United States Treasury. They're printing money, you know, they're putting money into trillions. And that's how we're getting these funds is because they're printing money, right? But of course, when any jurisdiction prints money, you drive up inflation, right? Prices start going up because you're putting money into everyone's pocket and changes your gross domestic product and your CPI, which really comes back to all the customers. So those are just kinda the, some of the stuff that I've been seeing. What I've really been driving since, you know, thinking of what happened to us during this pandemic and these disasters is I'm really, really interested in seeing the census data. There's reports on the website that links us to the national reports of census. But I wanna ask you maybe that we could kinda get, maybe get a group together within your division to kinda extract all of that data and make it so that we know what the census data for Saipan is. You know, what the real population is, what is it for Rota, what is it for Tinian? How many are business owners, how many are not, how many overstayers do we have? I think if we gather and obtain these information, again, it could drive us to make greater decisions. So maybe an extraction of that, the census report is very, very complex. Even just for me, just to go in and start reading everything, it's broken down into so many sections and stuff. So maybe we could get a team at the Department of Commerce, since that is right down your alley, to kinda extract that data and we can summarize it on a CNMI level so that all the senatorial districts and their mayors and their RDs have that data so that they could kinda drive decisions and plan how to kinda improve the commerce in their respective senatorial districts. And everything that we're gonna, everything we do, at least for us, and then every time we have plans as a Commonwealth. I think the greatest factor in coming up with the best plan is to really know the population. If we don't know and we're just guessing the population, it's very hard. You know, if we have that number and we can report it out to our citizens, they can say, oh man, I can, you know, I can open a small business selling maternity clothes or selling fish or selling, you know, based on the populations and the criteria and categories that they're stated on. So I'm very, I'm very, I'm gonna ask that we get that kind of data out of the Department of Commerce, you know, in the months to come. We have the new finance system that's coming into play with the Department of Finance, right? So I know JD Edwards is at the end of its life and our government has been operating on that platform for many, many years. So, you know, we're excited for the new system that is being built right now into our government systems. And I think by October of this year is when the Secretary of Finance said it will be, it'll start to be implemented and, you know, going on full force. We can grab a lot of data from that and, you know, have a lot more accurate data, which would drive a lot of our decisions at all levels of our government, right? Another thing is maybe to work on, work with, and I'm sure you're doing it now, work with other key agencies that work with businesses and enforcement, right? To name a few, finance, zoning for Saipan at least, zoning BECQ and other enforcement agencies to identify the challenges that drive the commerce in CNMI. I know a lot of our business owners, small business owners and even at the corporate level, they call our offices and they're very, very frustrated with turning this application here. You gotta go over here and then you gotta come back. And, you know, there's this one joke on social media that said, when you go to the Department of Motor Vehicle, don't forget your birth certificate, your passport and the declaration of independence because that's what you're gonna need to get what you're gonna get, right? So I think our business owners and entrepreneurs need to have that. We've always talked about the one-stop shop, but I think if we kinda regroup and see how we can, we can help them. So there's a lot, I, commerce is very important, it's very important for our success. It's very important for the self-sustainability of our CNMI. And it's one of the things that I always have on my mind in driving great decisions and actually coming up with the location that we wanna go, where are we driving the CNMI? What is our vision forward? So there's a lot of, there's a lot of work ahead and like I said, we can do it. Not only you, we're all gonna do it, everyone seated behind you and everyone seated here with us. And each of the staff members that are working in these respective offices, right? You know, right behind these walls, all of us have a role. And I think if we all play that role in our most effective way, I think we can get to better places for our people and for our Commonwealth. So I look forward to the other two hearings that we will have in Saipan and in Tinian. And I just, I really love coming to Rota and I can't wait to see where, you know, our people here in Rota are each other's tourist, are each other's customers. And, you know, these empty commercial buildings and offices are filled with everything. But I think before that happens, we need that data, we need that population. We need to know how sustainable, you know, these businesses can be. So with that, like I said, Mr. Guerrero, with the very impressive resume brings a very great expectation of yourself, but we're here to do it together. So our office is always open for you and I thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Now I just want to reiterate about the concerns that there is regarding the census. I don't know how difficult the Congress can come up with the different numbers of like ethnicity in our Commonwealth. And I'd like to see that since it was last week we had session, there is a public comment with regards to indigenous affair concern. And one of the commenter wanted to pay the earned income of the money deposited to the MLT and budgeted the indigenous affair with all the money that supposedly to be transferred to the general fund for distribution. And the amount that they think they can use in 80% will go to the indigenous pockets and 20% will be earmarked to the family and relatives. So I think that's, it reminds me back in 2000 something about the 80, 20, but then and to me that's, it's a no way of me even to think about that now. But it is important, I know, secretary, if you can have access then to see how many actually of indigenous people are in the Commonwealth. You know, the fund supposedly for NMD, yes, I understand that. That those funding the earned income from the MLT supposedly for the NMD. Now, when you transfer the interest to the general fund for distribution in government operation, then that's something else totally different from an NMD fund. So we are kinda interested actually to set your office, he is charged with that. We like to see the actual figure of indigenous people. That means include indigenous people, include the Caribbean and as well. You know, like Senator Biddy making recommendations, yeah, we can look into that and we can truly understand, you know, what we have in our Commonwealth. Thank you, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
No, I'm, you know, what Senator said, just kinda touch me a little bit because well, for Senator Biddy, we just finished the 2020 census. So to extract that out of the census, I think would be possible to do it. You know, we found really too many, you know, problems because we just completed 2020 census. But for the indigenous, when I was, remember when I was the commissioner of Abinglan? I started out the registration for all indigenous, you know, people of the CNMI. And then we had already registered close to 4,000, you know, they come in and we actually, you know, take all their census. And then after that, it just, you know, just stopped after I got it from, you know, the commissioner of Abinglan. But that's very important when you're dealing with that in DLT. We need to have that figure of the number of indigenous people that we have in the CNMI. And that is both, you know, the more and caring and, you know, to be classified as indigenous people of the CNMI. And those that are qualified based on the position that we have. Just wanna mention that.
Thank you. Mr. Guerrero, the drug policy for Congress is still the same or is that different in drug policy?
Drug policy?
Yes.
The drug policy the Congress follows is the mandated form of the civil service, OPM drug policy.
No, but I learned from the previous that there is a drug policy for Republican Congress.
I'm not aware of that. Just for Republican Congress?
Yes. That I raised that in the past when we confirmed the previous nominee in regards to the zero tolerance drug policies. Is that still, you're forcing that or you're referring to the civil service drug policy?
Now you're, no, the enforcement of that is still, is, you know, we follow the OPM civil service drug policy. But when EBDC officers were incorporated to the Kili Academy and becoming declassified as enforcement officers, where they're given the privilege to carry also army when they go on another job, and they followed under that, you know, low tolerance for drugs, drug policy. And actually, I don't know whether you've heard, but I just finished having all of their drug tests when I became anti-secretary four weeks ago. And that's mandatory. And as a result of that, we found some issues. So it is important that we keep our officers drug-free for the protection of our people out there. Because they go to the community and they do inspection in the stores, enforce, you know, EBDC policies and weight and measures and all that. And so, yes, they are, we are following the low tolerance for the enforcement staff section. So you have two categories in Congress, you have the administration and then you have the enforcement, you know, personnel. And that one falls under the rules of no tolerance on the, on the business of drugs.
Thank you. I raised this because I received information that there's no fairness in the law enforcement. So we just wanna make sure that that drug policies abide fairly to an equal to everyone. And I understand that there's some dedication, is it still on some process or add file dedication against the department?
No, not on the board, but I'm leading house, I've just, you know, I've just done enforcement on four officers that were the fourth or that category.
So everyone is back to ordinary?
Yes.
Okay, now I, some of my concerns that are within your mission statement in regards to insurance. You under enforcement and compliance. You mentioned about it put an unfairness on insurance. Do you monitor the, or enforce timeframe of insurance policy or, you know?
We do, we do. We have all kinds of requirements, we also do onsite basis for insurance. And some of those medications that I mentioned there has to do with the workman compensation. Or it has to do with employer employee and pure the process of settling claims.
For example, claimants that are cylinder and taking too long to have any?
Yes.
You enforcing the timeframe of that or any timeframe for, for claimants? For instance, did go accident?
Yes, there is. If there is timeframe for the, for the claimants to settle with insurance and if they don't settle, we have, we have to not also hearing. We bring in the insurer and the claimants and we have a hearing so that they can settle this thing, you know, on timeframe as a law.
So do you open this onsite and find out whether or not they're complying with the timeframe of those that are claiming damages or not been? Because I received confirmation that some insurance company are not pushing forward for the claimants to get them as to what is the situation of their claim?
Yes, we, there is a requirement for them to submit all claims copy to workman count. And that's where we monitor the timeframe in terms of when do they settle it or when do they start. And if we see that the settlement is not gonna happen within time, then the director of workman count will go a hearing to see what are the problems, why are they not, you know, settling the claims and all that. So yes, we are told that and we have quite a bit of plans right now that we're working on.
Okay, now on workman compensation, worship, I know that you guys are doing worship on that, you know, like public education worship. Often you, you do that, what is it, do that worship on the central, Saipan, or you do? or you do for senatorial district?
I'm not aware that we do that on the senatorial district, but I know that I've seen some, that happened several times since I was at Commerce in Saipan, you know, in Saipan. But of course, I agree with you, it should be done all three areas, yes.
I think I, I asked that you, if you heard the objection to look into that because I've seen some employees that are injured from work, but I, I, I guess you're not aware of the Worshipman Call. So, you know, if that's possible, then you can just look into that and see and, and make sure that those employees are, are well, that, you know, this is our worshipman compensation. And in regards to, I raised this before about taxi operation. I asked about the, the meter part. And I'm still hearing that taxi operators are, are not charging higher charges to, to customers or those meters that are regulated to the standard. Or no, it's just, just license meter, but it doesn't matter whether it's, whether it's a, it's regulated or not?
I, I, I need to look into that.
Can you, I asked you to look, that's what I heard the last time, you should look into that. But I, I'm here, you can respond as to whether any, any members of your department is certified to calibrate meters?
Well, yes, enforcement section, we have some people that are certified to calibrate different kind of meters, including, you know, the gas stations and the cash registers and all that. But let me just verify specifically for the taxi and I will, I'll get back to you on that.
Thank you. And in regards to work费, I think that was passed back in 18 years later. I, I was, I requested actually for Commerce, I know that we don't have a price control here in the Commonwealth. But I ask if they can reset the vendors, the stores and see how they can do to remove that work fee choices that are related into their priorities. But I think none, none of that was addressed and I know that we cannot tell vendors how to price, but at least to address that the work费 charges are overpriced. And I know that some board raised the concern of work费 is not, is not even worth. So at this point, even if there is that, he's gonna continue to vice, of course, vendors or stores who watch work费 is, is in place again, they will raise it again to cover those work fees off. But that work is never, never been removed from, from the stores because it was not addressed by Commerce. And I don't know, because that's in the 18s, that's your, can that be addressed, I guess, at this point? Just to see whether Commerce can do something about that and, you know, at least, at least some of the, the burden to the consumers?
Yes.
I know in your, in your plan, we don't ask you whether or not there is a case. There are, the Commerce have cases on, on, on non-compliance and how you, when there's a non-compliance and whether or not, whether doors are selling tobacco or tobacco minors. There are cases on those that are, that are set to follow or there was a within the Commerce enforcement department?
Yeah, there's different, different enforcement steps when nothing happens and it also goes to the framework, we can go slow down, you know, if they're doing, they're not following the rules.
Okay, so thus, thus the leader would like to use to go slow down because when Commerce budget, you, you ask for this, you know, I mean, closing it down, I think, just my opinion, I think it's a, it's one of the, if you penalize them, make them pay whatever the regulation, how much you enforce so that they can collect. And they will learn from that, whether or not closing it down and both side about making any, the government and the store. So I just ask that do not close establishment now or other, if they continue to violate or non-compliant, then if they have to pay, then they have to pay yourself a fine. Thank you. Any more?
Yeah, what?
Reconnaissance, I wish.
This taxi that Senator, the Chairman raised up. Do we have, how many, you have the statistics to help me? Like you operate.
We do, but I don't have, I don't believe you right now.
Oh, no, you don't have to, but I just.
Yes, we do.
Yeah, so I have this concern because, you know, like, like the charges, like sometimes it's too high and that's why also a lot of private cars, English, just taxi, charging $5 from West Lea to the airport and $5 from actually to, to San Francisco.
Yeah, also do taxis.
So I don't know whether this is private or actually they're doing commerce. And I'm surprised that, you know, there are a lot of client builders using that now, that kind of method than calling the taxi. So. And with that, Chairman, I have nothing more, but I just want to reiterate that the concern of this committee, Mr. Herrero, please make note and, and see what can come with. I most especially, I am pretty calm on this scale for both Rota and Tinian. And I like to see that we navigate to the point where the Commerce will take a leak and, and see what kind of funding is required to initiate this program. And moving forward, will be a self-generated division that can undertake the, the commerce of the policemen and powers, you know, for a long-lasting continuation of this. No? So that's my, my most concern that I want is to see the Commerce looking to that program. If we can improve that, one of the objective of Commerce that will be implemented for both Rota and Tinian. No? So with that, Mr. Chairman, I do and I have no more to add.
Thank you, Vice Vice Connaissance, I'm done. Thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the second round. Just real quick, Mr. Herrero, in reference to the CNMI, the Comprehensive Economic Development Strategy, the S E S, I know that was through a grant from the U S Department of Commerce and it was the CNMI's five-year economic plan, right, developed by, by the CNMI. There was a team that was put together, I believe, that was to come up with a five-year economic plan. I'm not sure if that's now in conjunction with the Office of Planning, with the Office of the Government and in harmony with, with those plans as well. But maybe we can go with, because I, I was looking at the, the S E S and just for Rota, you had a lot, there was a lot of projects listed, the terminal construction was to be at 50 million and the C P A airport drainage, 1.5 million, Seaport building was 5 million, the Puffing Marine expansions at 5 million, and, and the list goes on. And I know this was back in, in, in 2000, the submission dates for these projects were back in 2019. And it's only natural to know that with what we went through, what we're going through with this pandemic, a lot of these are not, they're not, it's what this time, but maybe we can move back and, and, and see how we can kind of adjust these, these plans based on what we're, what our capabilities are now in opposed to what our capabilities were before we, we went through all of this, this pandemic stuff. But just, I just wanted to touch on that and to, to see and maybe have somebody in the office work with Mr. Codep, the Chairman, and see what, which plans are kind of interacting with each other under the Office of Planning and the five-year economic plan under the S E S project under, under this Commerce. Thank you, that's all, Mr. Chairman.
In the floor. If nothing else to be raised, in regards to your appointment. At this time, all the comments are all taken. That the record later, there are also written testimonies submitted of indigenous people who will be appointed before this committee and will be included in the S E S Standing Committee Recommendation Report along with all testimonies to be forwarded before the full Senate members in consideration for confirmation or rejection. And before we adjourn, I would like to extend on behalf of the members of the Standing Committee our sincere appreciation and gratitude to Governor Torres and the Governor Colossus representative, Mr. Ted Bautista, the appointee, Mr. Everett M. DeLaurie, and most especially the members of the general public for your participation and involving you in this important public hearing process. We certainly hope that we continue this dialogue of communication. We will ask the elected officials and the public to keep your presence informed of a current and future Senate hearings I had that relates to topics in Congress. This concludes this public hearing for this afternoon. Do I hear a motion for adjournment?
No move.
And second, there's a motion on what's seconded for your opinion. O P M, the motions are aye.
Aye.
For both Senate, motion carries. This public hearing is now adjourned. Thank you.